Nice events, including a dunk tank. So anybody who wants to sign up for the dunk tank before they leave, please let us know because you can join and be in the dunk tank. So, all right, moving on to letter C, the 2021 Earth Day cleanup acknowledgement. Mr. Capera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you recall, on April 24th of this year, we brought everybody together at six different sites and we had 120 volunteers that picked up 75 bags of trash over six different sites. And we got, we think, at least six car and truck tires and one six-foot table. So I'd like to call the, all the volunteers that made it that day, I'd like to call you up here, this way, facing the camera right there. So come on, everybody. Don't be shy. Come on. Here we go. Come on. Let's hear it for them. So really, it's a, having all the young people was great because you are the stewards of our environment. As you can see with the heat wave and everything else like that, you're the generation that has to be responsible because my generation kind of messed it up. So, okay? Take care. I do have a proclamation from State Senator Sharif Street that I'd like to read. I, Senator Sharif, I'm sorry.
Senator Sharif Street is here.
Look, I just want to say congratulations to all of you for Earth Day and the work that you're doing. And it was an honor to have a citation for you. You know, each of us can do so much to protect our environment. And it's not just folks like me or legislators that are writing legislation about clean energy, but it's what we do, each of us, in our own day. You know, learning to close, to close the windows and not let all your parents' heat or air conditioning go out the window makes a, look, it's your saving energy, but you're also reducing your carbon footprint. Learning to turn out the lights when you're not using it, that's also reducing our carbon footprint. We can stay, we can fight against global warming. And also just making sure that trash and plastic doesn't end up in our rivers and streams. Those are things that kill off our fish and they, and they can ruin our environment. So the basic things that so many of you are doing, and I came out on Earth Day and watched a lot of you participate, those things that you're doing are so important. And learning those basic values and being committed to it at a young age, one, let you teach future generations, and two, if you master the little things, the big ones will be easy. And my grandma used to say, if you, if you, if you keep track of your pennies, the dollars add up. And so what I would just say to you all, keep on top of all the things that you're doing, day to day, to make the environment better. And if you do the, if you're on top of the things you can control right now, you'll certainly be able to master those bigger things when you have bigger opportunities to make a bigger deal. And so congratulations, Happy Earth Day, and I'm so happy to be with all of you celebrating it.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator. So I'd just like to end it with, it was great because you got grandparents, grandchildren, parents, kids. I do want to give a shout out. So those young ladies in the middle were over at Community Park and they got a 55-gallon drum, if you look in the up, top-left corner. That was stuck in a swell and they weren't leaving there until that bad boy came out. So I gave them all the credit in the world because it hurt just for me to look at it. So without further ado, I just want, we're going to get a good picture afterwards. And if you see Ashley on the way out, Ashley, if you could hold up one, a $5 gift chip to Dairy Delight. Yes, okay? So make sure you get one on the way out, okay? And then you're all welcome to stay for the budget meeting section tonight, okay? No? Okay. Very good. Okay, I just want to get you set up for a beautiful photo, so if I can get you all kind of clumped in right here. Little guys up front, bigger guys in the back.
And if we can get the Senator in there too, Mr. Capera.
Oh, sure. We almost forgot about this part. All right. The Senator of Pennsylvania, Harrisburg, PA, congratulations. Whereas the Senator of Pennsylvania takes great pleasure in recognizing those who through dedication and excellence contribute in a meaningful way to the well-being of their communities throughout the Commonwealth. Whereas Earth Day was first celebrated on April 22nd, 1970. Whereas after witnessing years of environmental neglect, millions of Americans of all ages, walks of life, and political affiliations gathered in cities across the nation on the very first Earth Day to demand basic protections for our planet and commit to leaving behind a healthier world for the next generation. That was you all because you all were born in 70. Whereas Earth Day is an annual event created to promote environmental citizenship and action year-round. Whereas Earth Day encourages the American people to mark it by working to address environmental challenges, large and small, from climate change to litter, to educate their friends, neighbors, and elected representatives about the importance of year-round action. And so that's what all of you just did. You worked hard to clean up your environment. Now therefore, I, Senator Sharif Street, on behalf of the Pennsylvania State Senate and the Commonwealth duly acknowledge the stewardship of the Middletown Community Park and thank you all for participating in honoring Earth Day respectfully submitted by me on behalf of the Pennsylvania State Senate. And here it is presented to, you wanted to receive it for everybody? Okay, you got it. Just hold on. All right. Congratulations.
And can we make sure that we grab a coin for Gavin? I don't see him here, but I know he was here at the Earth Day. And thank you, Senator Street, for not only joining us on Earth Day, but also coming tonight to present that citation. It's very well, very much appreciated. All right, moving on to letter D. We have a proclamation designating May as Alfonso Al G Duranty Month. For those who remember Mr. Durant, he passed away last year. Supervisor Payne asked if we can designate May as a date of, or a month to remember him because of not only what he did for our community, but what he also did in our school district where he was a longtime employee. So I will read the proclamation. Is his sister?
My daughter.
His daughter? And then I'll hand you the proclamation after I read it. So recognizing longtime resident Alfonso G Durant upon his passing. Whereas Alfonso Al G Duranty was a resident of Middletown Township for more than 60 years. And whereas Mr. Durant served in the Army during World War II. And whereas as a 30-year coach of both basketball and baseball at Carl Sandberg Middle School, Mr. Durant coached generations of students and left a lasting impression on those who knew him. And whereas Mr. Durant is a namesake of the Al Durant Service Award, given to Carl Sandberg Middle School students each year who exemplified a generosity, empathy, and kindness that Al was known for. And whereas Mr. Durant will be remembered for his kindness, positive outlook towards life, sincere caring for the well-being of others, and his unselfish attitude in and out of school. And whereas Mr. Durant was a prominent community member throughout his life and was loved by all who knew him, setting a positive compassionate example to treat others the way they wish themselves to be treated. And whereas Mr. Durant was a devoted and loving husband, son, brother, father, grandfather, and great-grandfather. And whereas Al G Durant passed away on the 7th of May, 2020, at the age of 91. Now therefore be proclaimed that the month of May shall be known as Alfonso Al G Durant Month in Middletown Township. We welcome his family and residents and members of the community to join in recognizing and remembering this outstanding gentleman. And by the proclamation, you can see that he was really part of our community and part of our school district. And it's something that in May, we will remember him each year. Thank you. All right, so with that, we will move on to number three, public comment on non-agenda items only. And when you come to the microphone, please state your name and your address.
My name is Jahad Ali and I live in Fairless Hills. I was, lived at 205 Chilton Way in Fairless Hills. I happened to be in the township on the day in 2019 that I wanted to come here tonight to tell you about because it's a day that forever changed my life. I had a, let me just tell you what happened because I really don't know what happened because I woke up in the intensive care unit two days later. And I can only tell you what happened. I don't have any memory of what happened. So I added a summary of what happened for my wife. And it begins like this. On Sunday, 9/15/2019, at approximately 6:15, while my husband Jahad and I were watching the upcoming movie trailer at the Oxford Valley Movie Theater, Theater 14, before The Hustlers movie was to start, is when I heard what I thought was snoring. I thought Jahad had fallen asleep since he has sleep apnea. But when I looked over, I noticed bubbles coming out his mouth and I heard a puffing sound. I stood up, I stood up and saw his eyes bulge, rolling back, and his body convulsing. I started yelling for help, asking someone to call 911. It's my husband, I think he's having a heart attack. A young lady.
Just take your time.
Came up in the seats on the top, jumped the rail and said, we have to get him out of his seat and onto the floor. I pushed the button on the chair as fast as I could to reset the seat. When I, when he, we then grabbed, we then grabbed him and pulled him down onto the floor. The young lady, who I later found out was a nurse named Khadija, began CPR. I kept calling out his name, Jahad, saying, not today, not on my watch. While another young lady called 911 from her cell phone, not sure how much time went by, when Zach, the first EMT who arrived, appeared at my husband's side. But it seemed quick. He briefly spoke to Candy and said Jahad's breathing was faint, coming in and out. His pulse was very weak before he began to use AED to shock his heart. I remember him saying, stay clear. Lane, another EMT, stayed with me as he was passing in deference to Zach, explaining step by step what he, Zach, and the other EMTs, Andrew, Ryan, and Ian, were doing to assist my husband all the while, keeping me calm and telling me not to worry. But they were not going to leave the theater until they had my husband stable. I provided someone with Jahad's wallet. I told him that he was retired Philadelphia Police Sergeant and a retired U.S. Marine, telling them to please take care of him. Once he was stable, they got him to the journey and wheeled him out of the theater to an waiting ambulance, where the decision, and with the decision and interest of time was to go to Jefferson Bucks Hospital, Emergency Hospital, which was closer than St. Mary's Center. Everything lined up and everyone present that day placed in the right order because I'm here today, a second chance to life, and express my sincere thanks. One thing that my wife doesn't say in this letter, I was out for 20 minutes. And so when they, they all, all the EMTs, and the EMTs were Andrew Taggett, EMT, Ryan Packer, medic, Lane Shore, medic, Ian Labator, EMT, Zach Cooperman, Deputy Chief, EMT, and Police Officer Mary Fel, a K-9 officer. All the EMTs came to see me in the hospital and they said, well, you know, you were down 20 minutes. And we worked on you for 20 minutes because I had all these burns. And I said, well, did you do that because I was a cop? And he looked me dead in the eye and said, no, we did it because, you know, because the machine kept telling us to defibrillate you. And to me, it really touched me in my heart because as stated, I'm a retired police officer. But to have those officers be committed, especially as we moved into where we are today, hearing all that stuff about Black Lives Matter and all the injustice that happened. But this day, justice happened. They served me like, they served any citizen. They really brought me back. And the fact that I'm standing here today to talk to you with no, you know, I had a little lapse of memory, but other than that, these guys did a tremendous job. And I kept telling them, I'm going to go here one day and talk, tell you all about what they did for me because it was a promise I had, but COVID got in the way and I just wanted to keep my promise. So I wanted to thank you for coming tonight. And it just so happened, I do a lot in Philadelphia, so I know the Senator. So when I saw him out in the parking lot, it just made me get emotional. And then when I saw the EED up there, it just brought back tears. So I just wanted to thank you, the Police Department, the EMTs, did an outstanding job. And I will be forever united with this county because here, I had a second chance to life and I'll never forget that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lee. We always recognize our police officers and our EMT for the job they do because we have top-notch police officers and EMT. And I, for one, am glad that you're still here because of them, but I'm glad you're here just all around. So thank you for the kind words and good luck.
I'll send this in.
Yep, take care, Mr. Lee. Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
Hi, Patricia Fitch, 343 Wyoming Avenue in Langhorne. I wasn't expecting to come here tonight.
Can you just repeat your name again?
Patricia Fitch.
Okay.
Wasn't expecting to come here tonight, but after the rain that we had over the last three hours, it just brought up one of the, a sore issue that we have. We've, we were flooded in June of 96. The township did some flood remediation projects for us. We have a wall behind our house. There's a retention basin in the neighborhood. The creek was rerouted. But then after tonight, the retention basin that we do have, it looks to us that the gates that are to let the water flow out of the retention basin are all closed. So everything's backing up into our yard. And also there is a sewer manhole that's at the end of our driveway. That is bubbling with sewer water. And that water is also going into the retention basin as well. So I'd like to see if there was something that we can do to revisit this problem. The other thing that we do have as an issue is that when the water comes down the street, the water has to go over top of our driveway to the other side of the driveway to get to the drain, the storm drain, in order for it to drain into the retention basin. So it has to go uphill. So with that being said, as the rain is coming down, the flood, the street is being flooded as well. So I think there's some other, you know, there's some issues. I have plenty of pictures that I just took. The backyard, I have my boots on because the water was up to here in the backyard as we were walking back to check on the retention basin. So I'm just asking for the township's help and if I, who I can talk to, first of all, about the sewer problem that we're having tonight of the water overflowing into the retention basin. And then going forward, just the other problems that we are seeing with the retention basin not being maintained. And there's a lot of growth in there. And like I said, these gate valves are closed. They're supposed to flush that water out so that we don't get the backup. And then, like I said, then the street problem, the street flooding problem every time it rains.
I missed your address, though.
343 Wyoming Avenue.
Wyoming?
That's in Oakley, her section, yes.
Is that by any chance, is that part of the drainage plan that we have for the next over there by Langhorne Gables?
Langhorne Gables would be the street above us.
It's on the other side.
And I'm hoping that doesn't have any, you know, input on more water that's going to come down our street.
I'm just wondering if it, if it would affect that.
I haven't had anybody come to the house or in our neighborhood to talk about the drainage problems we're having right now.
Okay. Pat, Mr. Ennis can maybe answer my question and maybe help you out too?
Yeah, so this is not included in what we're doing right now. But it is an area that we are concerned about and looking into. We'll be coming up in the next, you know, couple of years in our evaluation of the drainage systems in the town.
That's what I was wondering. Is it part of the three phases that we're doing with the drainage over there?
No, not currently. It's, it's a little bit to the side of the gables that we're looking into now, but it is an area that I've gotten a few complaints on. So we are starting to take a look at it.
Okay.
There has been a problem for forty years. We've been complaining about this.
Well, with that being said, the retention basin that was put in.
Can you get a mic for him, please?
There, there was a wall that was put up behind our house and a levee that went all through the Delaware Park. From what it looks like now, is the water is coming from Langhorne Gables and instead of going behind the wall like it's supposed to, it's coming in front of the wall, which is also creating flooding right through our backyard. And I have pictures of everything if you would like to see them, if I can send them to somebody. And then also even the issue with the sewer. I mean, I think that's a big concern that there's, you know, sewage water going into the retention basin.
We can also have our engineer go out and look at that too.
Right, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Does someone need my name, number, all that?
You can email me the pictures and make information.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fitch. Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda items. Letter A, consideration of authorizing payment of July 12th, 2021 bill list in the amount of $1,347,430.30. Letter B, consideration of approving the June 14th, 2021 minutes of the public meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. Letter C, consideration of approving change order number two for the Langhorne Gables Drainage Improvement Project in the amount of $5,719 for additional driveway restoration work on Cypress Avenue and payment number five in the amount of $43,627.40 to CDU Stormwater Maintenance and Management Systems, LLC for completed work during construction. Letter D, consideration of approving, approving payment number one for the 2021 road paving project in the amount of $90,858.45 to James D. Morrissey for completed work during construction. And letter E, consideration of approving resolution number 21-22R Multi-Model Transportation Fund Grant. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda items?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items.
It's a motion.
Second.
And a second, is there any board questions? Any public questions? Please state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Helen Gordon and I live on Cypress Avenue adjacent to the stormwater management system that they just put in. And I'm really pleased to see that they're addressing my driveway issue. So thank you for that. But again, with the rain tonight, I wanted to bring to your attention, I think I had called Mr. Ennis and left him a note, there's two drainage, two drains toward the back of my yard in the easement. Tonight, the rain was so heavy, the one drain didn't work at all. I had called him because there was erosion at the edge of one of those drains and I called a couple of weeks ago, a small child could fall in there. And tonight, when the rain hit, no water even went down there. I have pictures of it all. The flooding on the easement all along my house was horrendous tonight. Like I feel like it, it didn't work. And even the drain at the end of my driveway seemed to be too high for the water to drain into it. Water was going around it and down the street. So I have pictures of it all on my phone.
Is that the new drain that you're talking about?
These are brand new.
And it, and it's not going into the drain?
No. I couldn't even see the drain. It was totally covered in water, so it's clogged or something.
The one in your backyard is not new, though. That's existing.
No, that's new. And it's not actually my backyard. It's part of the easement. It's outside of my fence, but not far from my fence. There's two of them. Like this is my fence line. The gentleman with the terrible flooding over here, they put two drains, one here and one here. This one appeared to be working, but the one closest to my fence is totally covered in water, no drainage, like you couldn't see water going down it. It was just sitting on top of it. And that's the same one with the erosion on the outside of the drain.
On the outside of it. I mean, I could tell you the same thing, is we can have our engineer come out and look at it again?
Yeah, I think they need to.
And see what's going on? I don't think that's part of phase two. What you're saying, if it was already done, because there is a phase two that's starting next year in there, but I don't believe that is part of phase two and it probably should have been addressed in this phase here.
Probably. And, you know, they should have come back to double-check it. And the other thing that I had sent in my letter besides the issue with my driveway is the fact that the grass is not growing. When they put that grass seed down and the straw down, the first time we had a rain like this washed it all away. So we have bare dirt in many areas, which I sent pictures to Mr. Kessler and I think Mr. Ennis.
Okay. Now, when it, when it rains normally, is it, is it hitting the drain then or is it just the heavy rain that we received tonight? Because sometimes with the heavy rain that we get tonight, I mean, it's, just overwhelms these drains altogether.
I haven't gone out each time, to be honest with you.
Okay.
But I, that drain should have been draining water. I mean, it was just sitting still on top of it. When you have a drain that's way bigger than this podium, it should be pulling the water through. Instead, it was just flooding that whole easement.
Okay. Mr. Gartmire, what?
There may be a silt sock in there.
Can you, can you come to the microphone?
How you doing? I'm from Public Works, everyone Public Works. Sometimes what they do is before the project's done, the silt sock's still in there. So there might be like a basket in there that catches all the debris still. I will have to check that. But that may be what's happening with it also. That's why the water's not going in and it's just going right past it also.
Right. Maybe that's why it roared it on the side.
It could be.
And I would also suspect that this is a significant unusual storm event. I mean, this might be, I'm not an engineer, but a 500-year.
That's why I was asking if it would happen during every storm or just this one? Because this storm that we just got dumped a lot of rain in a long, I mean, a real quick time.
In a short amount of time, right.
Yeah. That sometimes the drains just can't keep up with the water that's there. That's why I was asking that question.
It wasn't draining at all. Like there was no indication of water swirling to go down. It was just puddled on top.
Mr. Gartmire said he'll take a ride out and look at it.
Okay. Maybe I'll show him my photos.
Okay.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Not a problem. Any other questions on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, four zero. Number five, consideration of awarding the 2021-2022 Fuel Consortium contract to Papco Incorporated, Aston, PA for unleaded gasoline, heating fuel, and low sulfur diesel. Mr. Gartmire.
Good evening. Once again, we participate in the Bucks County Consortium bid for various items to get a better price. This year, it was bid out back in May. We got all the paperwork together and submitted it. And this year, Papco was the winning bid for the, not only the home heating fuel, the diesel, and the gasoline also. So one company this year got it. Some years, it spread out through different companies.
I noticed that. Usually it's like two or three companies for each one, correct?
Yeah.
Now, is this, is this lower than last year or is it higher than last year?
It's, it depends. I mean, the fuel itself is a little bit higher, but not by much. The consumption, obviously that depends on the weather and everything else.
Right, right. Okay. I move to award the 2021-2022 Fuel Consortium contract to Papco Incorporated of Aston, PA for unleaded gasoline with an estimated amount of $154,537.50. Papco Incorporated of Aston for heating fuel with an estimated amount of $7,664.65 on an as-needed basis. And Papco Incorporated of Aston, PA for low sulfur diesel with an estimated amount of Is there a second?
Second. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any questions for Mr. Gartmeyer? Any questions from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it, four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gartmeyer. Next on the agenda is our Park and Rec Department update. Mr. Capara?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, July is Parks and Recreation Month, therefore, Ms. Teoli Coles thought it'd be a good time for me to give the department update during my month. As you know, local parks have been essential throughout the COVID-19 pandemic and many residents got to have a new appreciation for their local parks and what it means to them in their life and how essential it is. What I'd like to do is just go through a quick slideshow of how essential it is, how we're getting back to normal, how we're turning the corner, and despite everything that's going on, we're able to continue what's going, our progress here. If you can just... So we started our summer rec program on June 21st. As you can see, it's old-school park and rec program. It's chalk. It's art chalk. You can go as far as you want. We have balloons. You can keep flicking, Nick. We brought in therapy dogs this year, so I want to commend my staff. So Joanne Morelli and Patrick Graham did a fabulous job because while we didn't take as many trips, we had a, we brought in a lot more activities. So we brought in therapy dogs. The trainers would talk to the kids. They would ask questions. They would tell them their stories. It was a fabulous event. You could just, that's, that little guy was good. Again, basketball, wiffleball, you're playing with your friends, you're outside, everything's going great. At the, I want to commend the Fire Marshal Office. They were fantastic. So every Wednesday, they go to all three of our sites and they just hose the kids down. So wherever the fire hydrant is, they hook up and they go for it. At Top Corner, we had a heat day. So they're doing chess, checkers. This was karaoke. And like I said, we brought in a lot more events because we didn't go anywhere, so we had the massive slide at all three sites this year. Our counselors are fantastic. They're engaged with the kids. They're running around with them. They're doing great stuff. This was mask painting day, and I guess they ran out of a mask, so the counselor gave up his face. So that was awesome. On rainy days, kids go inside. I did ask them to take off their masks for this photo. So they were inside for more than an hour. We asked them to wear their masks. But again, everybody's happy. Everybody's doing their thing. It's good stuff. The other site, they're doing twister, checkers, chess, whatever. This is at the community park. They were doing their talent show, so you can see it all the way in the base in the shade. They had the speaker out and they're just killing an hour out in the sun, having fun. Now, outside of summer rec, one of the programs that was phenomenal for us was the archery program throughout the whole pandemic and everything else like that. They set up at Jones Park and everybody you can see is spaced out. We have a great time with that. Another program was skateboarding. So whether it was the middle of summer or the middle of winter, they were signing up for the class and you see, boy, girl, coats, shorts. It was phenomenal. Because the board really knows and wanted this skate park, you know how weird the skaters can be. So every time it snowed, they just went out. They snowplowed it. Guys would come out with their shovels, shovel it off, and then you could see, two hours later, they're skating. It's just commitment. I have to be careful. This Sit Happens Dog Training was a great program for us. So as you know, a lot of people adopted dogs during the pandemic and they needed dog training because they didn't know how to take care of the dog. So dog training for us was a phenomenal program. We also did outdoor zumba, outdoor yoga at Community Park. Our basketball league starts this week. We were supposed to start tonight and got rained out, but we have 250 children signed up for our basketball league, which is about normal, so I'm fabulous, fabulously excited. Construction-wise, Twin Oaks is proceeding. As you can see, new stuff on the left, old stuff on the right. New stuff on the left, old stuff on the right. It's proceeding as we go along. This is the kick wall that went live, let's call it November 1st, in the middle of the pandemic. It's been a great hit. We were, this game here, this young man has to light up all 16 boxes and he's getting time. So he's competing against somebody else on the computer game. Upper Orchard went, was built during, right before Thanksgiving because of COVID. We didn't have any ribbon cuttings or anything else like that. I just want to let you know that, you know, things are moving forward. Meanwhile, things that need work is because of the pandemic, everybody and his uncle was playing hockey and roller hockey and just, the rink is 20 years old and it just took a beating under the stress. So we, we're going to put that on the budget to try and take care of some things down the road. I'm going to do a public service announcement, movie night, July 29th. These are pictures. What we do is 6:45 to 8:15, we have activities. We have Gaga soccer, kids on the playground. People can come as early as they like, set up their chairs. We have a hot dog vendor. We, members of the Park and Rec Board volunteer. We make popcorn for everybody, so it's a real fun family evening. On September 26, we have the ceremony at Veterans Memorial Park. Mr. Tosti had mentioned that several times during this year's meetings. They're going to do the actual dedication. We closed down a small portion of Veterans Highway so that everybody could congregate safely. We have a beer garden event coming up October 2nd. I love this picture because no matter whether you're young or old, everybody loves Jenga. So it's just basically two people, 30 years apart, pretty much the same look and the same intensity with a game of Jenga. So I thought this was phenomenal. Trails, trash and trees are, I'm going to end with. So we have a big focus now to do a lot of trails in our township, and that is phenomenal. It just adds a lot of maintenance. So this trail was built or finished in fall of 2019, and you can already see that the trees and the shrubs are growing about two and a half feet into the six feet. So we really have to maintain it. So as many trails that we put in, we just have to realize the stress we're going to put on Public Works to do the maintenance. This is the trash picture. Again, it was, one of the things that we learned from the pandemic is that by doing your neighborhood park, we got a lot more people. So everybody, if we were doing your neighborhood park, we would get 15 people there, 15 people there. So that's something new that we're going to keep in our repertoire. And finally, Mr. Lupizansky's over here in his orange shirt, member of the EAC. He was part of the team that planted 28 bare root trees over at Upper Orchard Park. Because of COVID, we didn't have the big ensemble, but a couple of members of the EAC along with a couple of members of Public Works really did a great job. And John and Steve Donahue in the upper-left corner put on some deer guard protection afterwards. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Is like, I'm really excited over there at Twin Oak Parks that we're getting lighting on that one field. That'll really benefit them kids over there because they've never had lighting on that 60/90 field. So the pictures you sent to me were really like an uplifting for me because it's exciting to see the kids actually be able to play there.
And you're talking about the kids. Not only that, but Mr. Klimevich, who's a 61-year-old in our DPW staff, played there his whole life and coaches kids. Now he wants to make a comeback and play senior ball. So he's all excited, too. So it's not just the kids.
Anybody have any questions or comments to Mr. Capara? Yes, sir. Can you just come to the microphone and just state your name?
Thank you. The movie is Aladdin with Will Smith.
Say that, you saved your name. You don't have to say, right? Anybody else?
I just want to thank you, sir, for being part of the EAC and for planting all those trees. That's very, very kind of you to give of your time. Speaking of giving of their time, I love the way you pull in the community into the events that you're doing with Parks and Rec. I think the more that we can get people engaged in helping keep the township beautiful, maybe they'll do it in their spare time as well. So thanks for bringing the kids in to recognize them today. And I hope, Earth Day's always been one of my favorite events that we do in the township, the big thing at Core Creek with all the tables and the bands. I hope we can get back to that next year, but I hope we keep the park cleanup aspect of it because I think that hands-on element is so helpful for the kids. You know, they don't just wander around and get given stuff. They actually contribute a little bit. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update, Mr. Capara.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda is General Fund Key Revenue Source, Ms. Bundick. And welcome back.
Thank you. Just going to hold it since I'm short. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me to present today. It's exciting to be back after a really long time. So today, I'm going to present to you our year-to-date quarter to June key revenue drivers. We are going to have a full update of our financials in August at the August meeting, but we wanted to just give you guys a nice half, you know, second half or first half, I should say, revenue update. So as you can see, we're actually doing quite well on the revenue side. We're really catching up to what we were at in June of 2019. You know, overall, our property taxes are on target, if not better. Earned income tax, again, is doing quite a bit better, actually, and more in line with June of 2019. Real estate transfer taxes, we're seeing quite a bit of transfers coming in, so we're doing good there. Our mercantile, so as you can see, we have, we're a little bit lower than our June of 2020, but on target, if not better than June 2019. The reason for this is because we had a bunch of delinquent payments in early 2020. There were a bunch of letters sent out and some just ongoing efforts to get some delinquent payments. So hence the reason why there was a little bit of an uptick in the first half of 2020. Locals, local service taxes, we're seeing a little bit of a drop compared to 2020 and 2019. The reason for that is because of COVID. Unfortunately, there are quite a few businesses that ended up having to close due to the pandemic. So we're seeing some of that revenue, you know, shortfall there. Hoping to, you know, continue to see a little bit more coming in in the next few months, though. Amusement taxes have really come back. As you can see, in last year, in June of 2020, we had a huge drop with the pandemic. We're seeing that come back. We pretty much planned to have somewhat of an uptick this year with, you know, especially in the amusement tax department and some of the other areas. We're definitely seeing that the budget is following through. So we're excited to see that. And then license and permits, as you can see, we're actually doing quite well. We're better than 2020 and pretty closely in line with 2019. So overall, so far, revenue's coming in very strong and we're just going to keep looking at it and giving you guys more updates as the months come. Any questions?
I just have one question, but the comment is, I'm glad to see the amusement taxes up. That means Sesame Place is back and running, which is a good thing. But the, can we put that screen back up there, Nick? The local service tax. Do you know how many businesses were affected by the pandemic in the town?
I don't have an exact number. I can get that for you if you'd like. We, I reached out to Berkheimer, who's our provider, and they just basically said that quite a few businesses closed and hence the reason for the shortfall. But I can get that number for you.
Yeah, because I had a reporter reach out to me Friday and ask me, and I wasn't sure of how many we had. And now that you brought that up, it kind of, if we could find out that we...
Yeah, I can get a complete total for you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else?
My question is about the earned income taxes. The, I remember seeing a communication from the township, and it might have been in one of our monthly newsletters, about encouraging our residents, if they had been working from home, to refile as Middletown, you know, employees, not employees of Middletown, but employees working in Middletown as opposed to Philadelphia. So if you're no longer commuting to Philadelphia, make sure that you declare your place of business as Middletown. So that you don't, it benefits the resident and it also benefits Middletown because you're not paying the very high Philadelphia earned income tax and your taxes stay here in our township. Do you think some of that action is what's causing the slight increase, A? And B, is there still time for a resident, if they, you know, file amendment, I know you're not their personal tax accountant, but if they file an amendment to their taxes, can they still get that changed to get that money back for the time that they were working as a Middletown place of business person?
So as far as earned income taxes, yes. I think a lot of the uptick is because of the change in profile. I would have to check with Keystone, unless Stephanie knows.
I do, I do know. So what we encourage folks to do is they have to, with their employer, fill out a certain form, which is a change in residency form. They need to give it to their employer and their employer will make that change. It's always a little bit behind the impact on the EIT. So I think the number one reason that the EIT was not hit that hard, and it's not just in Middletown, it's across the state. High-wage earners were not as significantly impacted by the pandemic and some, many of them did better. And that offset the wage earners that were laid off. So we have, why don't we refresh our website, Nick? And we'll put tomorrow a link to the information because it's very detailed. And I don't know specifically, of course, it's not too late, but it's pretty complicated. But the long story short is if you're teleworking and you are in Middletown Township and your firm or your company has not called you back yet, your EIT belongs here, not at the, in the city.
Yeah, and if I recall correctly, it can save the individual taxpayer thousands of dollars.
A lot of money. A lot of money.
Okay, that'd be great. I'd love to get that information back up there just to help anybody out who's, I know some people, my dad files an automatic extension every year. And so he just knows I'm not doing this till October. So there may be some people in that situation.
I do know, I mean, just, you know, throughout, we were getting a lot of calls. A lot of calls, they tried, they need to go to Keystone, but, you know, the township does get a lot of calls on the taxes. And I did have a lot of questions on how to go ahead and change your residence, basically, for EIT. So I do know that there are folks that are doing it and that is definitely a reason for some of the uptick. But yeah, I guess we'll continue to push that out. Any other questions?
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you so much. I will definitely get that local sales tax number to you.
Hope the baby's well.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You, too. All right, moving on to number eight, consideration of appointing a planning commission. First, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Kevin Strauss from the planning commission.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any board questions? Any public questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, four zero. For the planning commission, I would like to appoint Kiran Hastings to the planning commission. Kiran actually was on the zoning board and had to resign because of conflict in the schedule with his work when they had the meetings, but he's willing and able to work on the planning commission and he has been an asset going to the meeting. So I would make a motion to put Kiran Hastings on the planning commission.
My second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any board questions? Any public questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it, four zero. Moving on to number nine, consideration of environmental advisory committee appointment. We had a resignation that we accepted, I believe, at the last meeting. So for this meeting, I would like, let me find, I would like to appoint, make a motion to appoint Kevin Deeny to the EAC Committee. Kevin, from my understanding, attends the meetings every month or every, by month when they are held and has been active with the EAC. So he would be an asset again to our township and that committee. So I would make a motion to appoint Kevin Deeny to the EAC.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any questions from the board? Any comments from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. All right, moving on to other business. Ms., and I know I'm going to butcher your name, so I'm just going to say Leanna. Do you have anything?
I have nothing else to add.
All right, thank you. Mr. Esposito?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Teoli Coles? Ms. Teoli Coles.
Nothing further, thank you.
Ms.? Oh.
I apologize, yes. The board held an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss some ongoing litigation matters and some employment matters.
Thank you, Mr. Esposito. Ms. Teoli Coles, you said nothing?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Quirpul.
I just wanted to remind everybody, I know that the Fourth of July weekend is over, but this time of year, we still get a lot of people with doing fireworks, and I just want to remind everybody that there's almost nowhere in Middletown that you can legally set off fireworks. It does cause a lot of people to, with P S V, dogs, and just be, you know, mindful of your neighbors, and please follow the laws and the ordinances of our township. And that's all. Stay safe and have a good summer.
Thanks, Ms. Quirpul. Ms. Strauss?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Kezak?
Nothing further.
All right, I would just like to follow up on some issues from the last meeting. We had some public comments on a few items from our last agenda. Well, they weren't on the agenda, they were other things, so I would just like to follow up. Item number one was paper streets. We had a gentleman, Mr. Haynes, from 323 Elmwood Avenue, asked the township if we would buy back the town or the undedicated street and make it a township street. I did stop out and visit with Mr. Haynes, and I told him that the township has more than the three paper streets. Actually, there's probably 40 paper streets still within the township. We were given the list of them, and I gave him some of the options on if we were to do it, how he would have to do it, which would be just unaffordable for the residents there on that street. He said he was going to come tonight and still addresses, but I didn't see him. But I did stop and talk to him, and I explained it to him. Item number two were golf balls from the Middletown Country Club. Ms. Teoli Coles stopped out there and met with the township or with the golf course about the golf balls that are flying into the street, and they have made some adjustments to that tee box and to the course there. Some of them, they have put, some of the adjustments they do, they put signs, and they're located at various points throughout the golf course for residents to know that if they hit it into the street, it's their responsibility. The golf course has removed a few trees, which will open up the fairways a little bit, so they don't have to go around trees. They are going to repair the netting that goes along 213. On the one hole, which was hole 12, they moved it back. The tee box has been moved back, and they moved that hole from a par four to a five. And they've also put some signs on the golf course carts to identify to the players about hitting balls into the street. So the golf course has made some adjustments to try to help them residents out. Only time will tell, but they are working with the residents to fix that. And there was another one by Mr. Warren about the cost of the Juneteenth holiday, which would have been a normal workday, and it would have been just a normal payday for all the employees anyway, and the cost of that, determined by our finance department, was $41,000, which would have been paid to the employees anyway. And that's it from that. And then the last thing I would like to mention is, last year in August, we had two citizens from New York. They attacked one of the workers over there at Sesame Place where they broke his jaw. And I would like to thank our police department, the county detectives, and the county DA, because this past week, them two individuals were convicted for the assault on that young man. And if it wasn't for our police department tracking them down and the county detectives and in our DA's office following through with that, these people from New York would have got away from attacking a 17-year-old kid for just asking to wear a mask over there at Sesame Place like they asked them to do. So thank you for all you do, and we appreciate that, that they were actually convicted. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second. We're adjourned.